Okay, the time is now six oh four P M. Good evening and welcome everyone to May twentieth twenty twenty five Disability Issue Advisory Board Meeting. I am Stephanie Blackwell. I am the Advisory Board Chair. Thank you all for joining us today. For those who are unable to observe now, the meeting will is being recorded and can be accessed on PG CPS YouTube channel. Ms. Vickery, can you please do a roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Sylvia Amaya. Ms. Stephanie Blackwell.
Present.
Ms. Trinelle Bowman. Ms. Sarah Byrne.
Present.
Ms. Tricia Dorsey.
Present.
Ms. Rachel Doyle.
Present.
Mr. Christopher Dwyer.
Present.
Mr. Jamal Django. Ms. Irma Cottrell. Ms. Tangela Myers.
Present.
Ms. Janie Payne. Ms. Brittany Patrick.
Present.
Ms. Teresa Smith.
Good evening.
Present.
Ms. Cherie Vickery, I'm here. And Ms. Erica Wingate Robinson.
Present.
With the quorum present, the Disability Issue Advisory Board Meeting will come to order. Adaptation of the agenda, adoption of the agenda for May twentieth two thousand twenty five meeting agenda. Is there any, did everyone have a chance to review the agenda for this evening? If there's no objections, the advisory board shall adapt the May twentieth twenty 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 five meeting agenda. Any objections? Approval of the meeting, approval of the minute meeting approval approved for April eighth twenty 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 five meeting minutes. Is there any corrections the advisory board shall approve April eighth twenty twenty five meeting minutes? As distributed, do anyone have any objections to the minutes from that meeting for April the eighth? There being no corrections on April eighth two thousand twenty five meeting, the minutes are approved. Report, I am very pleased to announce that the Disability Issue Advisory Board has filled the two open vacancies. In District Five and Nine, Christopher Dyer, I hope I said that correctly, from District Five and Tangela Myers from District Nine, has been selected as our newest representatives. These appointments were will be officially announced at June twelfth Board of Education meeting. So yeah, we hit those positions filled. Now, I have, I have liked to review, recognize to briefly introduce them themselves to share they inspired them to join the DIAB. Mr. Dyer, would you like to speak?
Sure.
Introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, let me turn on the video. Can you guys see me okay? I hope so. My name is Christopher Dwyer. I work for PG CPS. I work at the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts over in District Five. And, you know, well, we received an email saying that they were looking for people to fill District Five, and I believe it was District Nine, and I was like, well, let me check my district. Let me, let me start with that. And I was in District Five, which is the Bowie area. I have two daughters that are in PG CPS school right now, both of them at Tulip Grove, which is a wonderful elementary school. One of them is actually receiving disability services. She, actually, that's kind of a rare genetic deletion. It's called a syndrome is what they call it, which just makes retaining knowledge a little bit harder for her. And I figured that I'm in District Five. I have attended many I E P meetings. We also, she also has mild hearing loss. So we're in Dr. Cron's office over in Mitchellville very often, and there's a really nice collaboration between that office and PG CPS. And I figured that I could, I could contribute to this organization. And, you know, I want to start off by listening and learning and seeing how you all like to operate and, and then putting in my two cents when it's appropriate. So I really appreciate the appointment and the opportunity to give to the community and give to the students at Prince George's County Public Schools.
Thank you. Ms. Tangela Myers.
Sure, let me turn on my video. So first, I'd like to say thank you all for trusting me with this opportunity. I've lived in Prince George's County since around twenty ten. I have two grandsons who are in the Prince George's County School System. Both of them are either other health impaired or in the autism awareness program. I will tell you that I can be a handful when it comes to advocating on behalf of my grandsons to ensure that they get services. I am, I currently work for the U S Department of State Foreign Service Information Management Specialist. I usually travel overseas. I'm also a U S Navy veteran. My son has also joined the police department, so we are vested within this community now if we hadn't been before. And I do want to continue advocacy for, you know, persons with disabilities, especially in the education environment for both the students and the providers to ensure that they have what they need in order for everyone to be successful. I think that's a particular challenge in this school system, and so I want to do what I can to contribute positively to that. So thank you once again.
Thank you. I like to think it's safe to say we are glad to have you on board and we are looking forward to working together.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. Next on the agenda is a report of the subcommittees. The chair recognized the advisory board subcommittees for their committee reports.
Hi, Chair Blackwell, this is Brittany Patrick. Pardon me all, I'm taking this from the car because traffic was rough. I'd like to ask Chair and Vice Chair, we have about eight recommendations related to Board Policy seventeen hundred to review. In addition, we have one request. What is our preference for how we might go about that today? Would you like for me to introduce each one and then we open to discussion or?
You can present each one and then we can open it up for discussion for the committee to, if they have anything else to add to it or anything about any changes and see what perspective their board member Brown has about those suggestions and recommendations.
Okay, okay, great. So I'll start with our first recommendation that we'd like to present to the board, and that is to change the name of the Disability Issues Advisory Board, specifically to change the name to something more positive. Our rationale is that the current name Disability Issues reflects, you know, a negative connotation. And language matters when we're talking about disability and disability rights. We know that there are different views of disability, one of which is the medical model, which is okay, right, when we are going to the doctor. But that model tends to view disability as a problem to be fixed. And so our first recommendation would be to change the name. And in the document that has been shared, we have proposed two examples for consideration, one of which is the Advisory Council on Disability Affairs, and the second is Advisory Board on Disability Rights. So I will pause there in case we need to open the floor.
To anyone, Ms. Vickery?
I'm sorry, just in order, Ms. Patrick, can you repeat the last one again?
Sure. Let me see, one second. So the second, it would be the Advisory Board on Disability Rights.
Is there any discussion about what Ms. Patrick has proposed? Any discussions?
Could we hear the first one again, please?
Ms. Mr. Dreyer?
The first one, Advisory Council on Disability Affairs, Advisory Council on Disability Affairs, and the second Advisory Board on Disability Rights.
The committee would like to recognize Ms. Myers.
Hi, first, I applaud your efforts on suggesting a possibility of renaming it. My only comment is that in what you stated was about the word surrounding disability, and the two titles that you've proposed still have the word disability. It's just a comment.
Ms. Doyle, Rachel?
Hi, I love the idea of changing the name, and I would also say that disability isn't a bad word, right? It's a descriptive word. So I don't have a problem with them still having disability in the name. I love rights because that's what we're fighting for, right, is people's rights. People's rights are being violated, and we need to make sure that they're not.
Ms. Patrick?
Just wanted to clarify that disability, again, to reiterate, would not be considered the word that we can, we would think is negative. It's the term issues that's present within the terminology. So disability issues, we believe, is a, is a negative connotation in the context.
Okay, anyone else have, like, Mr. Dreyer?
Does the, thank you for recognizing me. Does the acronym matter? So an example would be the Bowie Regional Vision Association's acronym is BRAVA. Is there anything, any weight into coming up with, like, I like both of the names, so I just wrote down the, the first letter of each one to see if there was any kind of ring to it that's sort of like that. So does, is that something that interests everyone? I do like the two names. I'm just curious if, if that matters to anyone.
Anyone else like to have a discussion regarding the name change? Ms. Smith?
So I don't know if Ms. Patrick want to add on to this, but we actually did think about acronyms because that's just kind of the way of the world. Like, you, you set a name up and then it instantly turned into an acronym. So I'm, I think for me, I'm not against an acronym, as long as whatever that acronym is, it does not create this negative perception about the name of the group. And then, Ms. Blackwell, I think I do have a question on process. So the recommendation has two names. Do we need to take a vote on each name? Or is, is the process for us to just propose the name and then it goes further down the line? How is this going to be handled?
I would propose a vote. And a name change. Do I have any objections to proposing a vote from the committee? Okay, so we will go for a vote for the name change, and we will put, we'll put it in a Google.
We can do it. Yeah, we can do it now, so Ms. Ms. Vickery will have to present it. Ms. Vickery would need to take the role. Let me say it like that.
Okay, board member Brown, you hit your hand up?
Yes, real, real quick. Now, is this a proposal name to put to the board to decide? Or I just want to make sure that I'm hearing the language correctly. Over.
Ms. Patrick? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, let me, let me get back in my seat.
Thank you for your question, board member Brown. So all of these recommendations related to Board Policy seventeen hundred are simply recommendations that we are proposing to move forward to the board.
Okay, and Sarah, Brian, is it Bane or Brian? I want to make sure I pronounce everybody's last name correctly.
It's okay. You can just go Sarah B. That's.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to note, and I think it was helpful what Mr. Dwyer said regarding acronyms. So if we go for the second one, or at least propose that as the one with the kind of most weight behind it, your, your A B D R, which, which doesn't really roll, but, but it rolls better than A C D A, I think. Right? I know these, we're, we're all on the same page. Everything becomes an acronym. So if we just maybe give mine, because as it is now, we call this DAB, right? So A B D R, if we want rights in there and disabilities and advisory, which seems consistent, it's either Advisory Council on Disability Rights, A C, no, A B D R, I think works. Anywho, that's, that's my points for consideration. Thank you.
Okay, so we're at this point now, if we take a vote, I have to ask Ms. Vickery to call for a vote on the name change, if we agree as a committee, and what that name change will be.
Point of clarification, Chair. Do you want the entire advisory board to vote on each name? So one vote on one name, one vote on another, and then we're comparison voting? Or how, how would you like this? Because while I do have three screens, I got to at least set up one of the other screens to prepare.
Okay, got you. Vice Chair. Some suggestions. How should we take this vote?
Yeah, I think we should just get a count on both names.
Okay, got you. We can take a vote on both names, Ms. Vickery.
Okay, excuse me, Chair, may I interject? So you're gonna have to state the motion.
Ms. Johnson, I was just about to, I was about to get the chair together.
Okay, I'm gonna go back on mute.
Blackwell, what I need you to do is actually make a motion that we vote, but you're gonna have to do, I need you to do one motion for the first one. That's gonna be the first name, the first title, and then I'll, after we do that vote, then I'll give you the next one for this next motion, okay? I need you to make a motion on a potential name change of the advisory board to the Advisory Council on Disability Affairs. That's the first one.
Disability Affairs, hold on one second.
Advisory Council on Disability Affairs.
Advisory Council on Disability Affairs. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for name change from the DIAB to change of the Advisory Council Disability Affairs. All in favor?
No, I got you. I got you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote. When you hear your name, please say aye or nay or abstain, depending on your vote. Ms. Amaya. Ms. Blackwell.
I would say yes.
Ms. Bowman. Ms. Byrne.
I'm gonna say nay.
Ms. Dorsey.
I'm gonna say nay.
Ms. Doyle.
I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Dwyer.
Abstain.
Mr. Django. Ms. Cottrell. Ms. Myers.
It's my first meeting. I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Patrick.
Nay.
Ms. Payne. Ms. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Vickery.
Nay.
And down at the bottom with me, Ms. Wingate Robinson?
Nay.
Okay, we have voted and the motion has not carried.
Okay.
We have a total of six nays, three abstentions, and one aye.
Okay.
Your next motion?
The second name, please?
Yes, Advisory Board on Disability Rights.
Advisory Board.
On Disability Rights. And give me one minute. I need to open a second template. I just need about thirty seconds. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Motion to make name change from the DIAB to the advisory board Disability Rights.
Will now do a roll call vote. Ms. Amaya. Ms. Blackwell.
Nay.
Ms. Byrne.
Yay.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yay.
Ms. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yay.
Mr. Django. Ms. Cottrell. Ms. Myers.
Again, abstain.
Ms. Patrick?
Yay.
Ms. Payne. Ms. Smith.
Yay.
Ms. Vickery.
Yay.
And Ms. Wingate Robinson.
Yay.
Motion has carried with eight ayes, one nay, one abstention.
Oh, excuse me, Chair, may I interject? I'm sorry, did you say there were eight in the affirmative? Okay, so there needs to be nine, so the motion didn't.
The motion didn't. Thank you, sorry, we have to meet.
Ms. Patrick?
I'd like to make a motion to present both names to the board for consideration.
Board member Brown, is that feasible for us to do that?
I don't see why not. I think go for it.
Okay. Okay. The name change would be before the board for.
Go ahead. We need a second.
Anyone, Ms. Smith?
I think I want to amend the motion. I move that we recommend both names to the Board of Education and that, how do I want to say this? And that the Board of Education alerts DIAB if they would like to propose a different name.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Is there any seconds to Ms. Smith's?
Second, Brittany Patrick.
Ms. Vickery, can you record that, please?
Ms. Blackwell, didn't you say the, the motion has been moved seconded?
Okay, the motion has. Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Regarding, recommended to the board? So I say, am I in agreement? Did I say that the, this is still new to me? Do I say that the second motion has been?
Well, I think what you can say now is that if there are no objections, the motion passes.
Okay, if there's no objections, the motion has passed. Ms., that's gonna call you, Ms. Patrick. Would you like to continue?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I was raising my hand to do. So our second recommendation related to Board Policy seventeen hundred is around the scope of the policy. The existing policy is limited in scope in that it only states that the, that DAB is supposed to address structural ADA compliance-related matters as well as hiring issues, et cetera. We are recommending a recommendation to the board to expand the scope and the charge of DAB. Specifically, we like to expand the scope to address the following disability issues. One, a free and appropriate public education and discipline of students with disabilities. Two, accommodations specifically related to Section five oh four and Title Three of the ADA. So these accommodations would be those that affect both students as well as educators and employees. Third, the inclusion of electronic and information technology accessibility, which is addressed under Section five oh eight of the Rehabilitation Act. Fourth, physical accessibility, which is related to the Architectural Barriers Act as well as the Americans with Disabilities Act. Fifth, continuing to include hiring, specifically under Title One of the ADA and Section five oh three of the Rehabilitation Act. And lastly, seclusion and restraint, and this would fall under IDEA and ADA. So our rationale here all is that expanding the board's scope to cover these areas ensures comprehensive oversight and compliance with critical disability rights laws. Each of these issues, we believe, is vital to ensuring equity, safety, and inclusion for individuals of disabilities, including students and educators. So I know that's a lot, and so I would advise you all, if you have not accessed the document where our recommendations are located, please do, but I'm also happy to repeat anything.
Are there any discussions on anything that Ms. Brittany, Ms. Patrick has presented?
I'd like to provide some discussion, and I think it's more for Mr. Dwyer and why am I, Ms. Myers, excuse me, I was looking at the roll call. I was like, why am I not finding your name? I think because you guys are just joining us to give you just a brief history. So DAB is charged with following the scope of Board Policy seventeen hundred at this time, but as Ms. Patrick was indicating, seventeen hundred is light at best. It's about four sentences. And so we have this charge as Advisory Board, but we are kind of in this situation where we, the recommendations that we have really don't fit the charge of Board Policy seventeen hundred. And so this particular subcommittee was born out of the idea of like, hey, we're asked to do these things, but some of these things are not within the policy, and so how can we do these things without first having the charge to do them? Even though the charge is like kind of there, it's just not really explicit. And Board Member Brown is like shaking her head yes, because we've had many discussions prior to us getting here at the start of the Advisory Board. many um, discussions prior to us getting here um, at the start of the um Advisory Board, and so if you're wondering like, wow, that's a really hefty thing, it's when you actually see the policy, you'll say, oh, that's why um, this recommendation is there. Um, so I just wanted to kind of give you guys a little background, because I I know that you're walking into a lot of work that has kind of been done, but it's just, this is actually just foundational work. We have, we, we have to, we're setting the foundation in order to go forward, and that's kind of what all the subcommittees are doing.
Do we have any discussions, um, Ms. Patrick?
Just to add some, uh, one more uh, piece of context here, uh, the existing policy is limited in that it does not allow the current board to really address um, any challenges facing students directly. Uh, much of it is related to hiring, it is related to, as I shared earlier, you know, um, accessibility of buildings. However, when we think about the um longstanding challenges of our students with disabilities in K twelve education space, um, I think it's important, and and this committee found it important for this policy to also be able to address uh, challenges that students were experiencing, civil rights issues that students were experiencing within the public education space.
Um, Board Member Brown?
Yes, and thank you so much, um, Ms. Patrick, you eloquently put it, and Ms. Vickery, the explanation was great. Um, yes, as a new board member, we have been dealing with this, I I went back to my emails, and I'm like, oh, we had an inquiry about this in January, um, and so what I can tell you is that I'm, can continue to work with the Policy and Governance Chair, who is Dr. Felton Moss, um, he gets a lot of his directions from the state, uh, but one of the concerns that I do recall of us discussing in January is it bleeding over C CAC um, and the work that they do, and so just for situational awareness, C CAC is a Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee in Prince George's County, and so, um, he wanted to make sure that it didn't overlap their efforts, um, and that we had separate efforts you know, from C CAC, um, but yes, it does uh, primarily talk about accessibility in buildings, um, and we have discussed it, and so I will be that squeaky wheel again for y'all and say, hey, you know, Dr. Moss, this is a recommendation, um. I know you all probably don't have a lot of time when you give your presentation on in June for the June meeting, um, but that is definitely something that I would kind of slip in there as well. So, this is a recommendation.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Smith?
I, I have some background noise, so I hope that you guys will be able to hear what I'm going to say, so Ms. Brown, I totally heard you, um, but C CAC is in place under IDEA, so their purview is only from that regulatory perspective. Um, Ms. Ms. Patrick identified several different um statutory sections that apply to people with disabilities as well as students, so I would just caution, caution us from having the mindset of deferring things to C CAC, knowing that they are limited in scope. Then the other thing is that C CAC is a voluntary-based group. They have to be in place because of the regulatory requirements, but if if that I hate to say this, but if 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 their exec board decides to just walk away one day, and it takes the school system uh, six months to regroup that that team, we may be putting our population at a disadvantage, so I think that this policy, making the changes to this policy will help us
Yes.
have that governing body in place, so I'll just state that.
Okay, Ms. Vickery? We can't hear you, Ms. Vickery.
I know, I was trying to catch the last part, Ms.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um, I I just wanted to say additionally, um, a lot of the work, because I am on um on this subcommittee, a lot of the work that we did when we were looking up some of the things that the policy pointed to, it would um it would point us back to county regulations and county policies that are frankly out of date. There is one county policy it points us to that is from nineteen ninety, and the ADA Act was updated again in twenty ten, but it's pointing us to nineteen ninety ADA. Um, it would point us to C O M A R regs that are no longer existing, and that the C O M A R reg has been changed, or it has been truncated, so just so that everybody on the Advisory Board understands that the way that it is written now really does, kind of like Ms. Smith said, put PGCPS at risk, because where it is pointing us back to either no longer exists or severely out of date by twenty years.
Um, I'd like to thank everyone on the committee, especially Ms. Patrick. These are the things that I have been fighting for, for years. My son would be forty years old, and as Ms. Vickery has pointed out, that things are so outdated that parents like myself have had to fight and get things in place at that particular time, but it was not put in place the right way, you know, when you go through this, when you go through this process and trying to advocate for services for your child, that it's only taken care at that particular time at at a meeting, and then after that, it's like, okay, we go on to the next thing. But now, at this junction, we can have things put in place, in in writing, to address these issues, because it should not have taken forty years to get this in place, my son's been in school, was in school at the age of three and a half years old. And for these things to be put in place and to be addressed, it shouldn't have taken this long to get those things addressed. So I, I thank the committee for coming together and trying to get these things put in place, because forty years, when we talk about employment, hiring, and other, other issues that we are trying to address as a committee, it shouldn't have taken this long. It, it really shouldn't have had, um, Ms. Myers?
I just wanted to say, sort of echo what you're saying, I applaud what you all are doing. Um, it's been a difficult road, um, and I'm happy that there is some forward motion, and I'm not the only one that's advocating in this space for our children, and not just my children, but everybody's children. Um, I fight that fight all the time, um, and and I know you all are proposing these updates, but like Ms. Vickery mentioned, you know, some of these things are referring to policies or or things that have gone out of date a long time ago. Is there not a mechanism in place that requires a periodic review? You know, I, I can tell you that from some of my experiences, it seems like they rest on, oh, this old thing that they know is out of date, but they will still stick to it. Um, so it's just, it would be helpful if there's something in place for a periodic review beyond our time.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, to that question, the, the policies do have a timetable for review. I think what has, what has happened, and I don't, I don't know if this is accurate, this is an assumption, that this particular, this particular policy, I think, was deactivated, that might be the term, and as a result, um, it wasn't in the queue, it was not getting in the queue for that review process, which, which is really unfortunate. Um, so yeah, so there, to to answer your question, yes, there is a policy in place for the review of policies and procedures. Um, but this one, we, I was petitioning with the board to get this particular policy back up and running, hence why we're here today. Um, but I think the issue was because it was deactivated.
Ms. Vickery?
Um, Chair, I think um, we might be over our time.
Okay, let me keep moving.
We might need to um, keep going.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Are we good to move to the next?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um.
I'm sorry, Chair, I didn't raise my hand real quick, I I think I need some clarity, so and this is just for any of the sub-working groups, the recommendations are being presented tonight. Do we have to take a vote on each recommendation moving forward? So is it just presentation, or are we having to, because we're presenting it to the entire board, if I guess I'm concerned, there may be members here that may not want that particular recommendation to go forward, so is it just presentation, or do we need to take a vote?
Um, can I, um, I'm sorry, Chair, if you wouldn't mind.
That was to ask you to get more clarification on that.
So, what, I guess what you all could do is you could present all the recommendations, and then take a vote at the end to move forward, to have it presented to the board um, versus one by one, and if there's any objections um to the recommendations, all of them moving forward, then you probably have to break them out and see which ones um, were objected to, or you can or you could do, um, you could probably give the recommendation, and then if there aren't any objections to it, you don't necessarily have to take a vote, because if there aren't any objections, you could just move forward, that one would be sent to the board, and then just go down the list, so it kind of depends how you all want to how you want to do it, if you want to continue this, this format, um because I, I'm, I'm, my guess is that if no one is objecting to the recommendation moving forward to the board, you don't need to take a vote on it.
Okay, Ms. Patrick had her hand up, thanks, Ms. Johnson, for clarification, um, Ms. Patrick?
Yes, um, I would like to present all of the recommendations, if possible, um, and then allow um us to discuss if there are any specific recommendations that uh, members may have questions about, if possible, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Myers?
Uh, just, just a comment, I'm going to self-identify as a visual learner. While I've appreciated all the reading, it's harder for me to grasp it if I don't see it. And so, because I'm new tonight, I don't want to delay any of the work that you all have been doing, but I'll just put that out there for future information that I'm a visual learner, so it's harder for me to grasp it if I'm just hearing it. But I'm willing to listen, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Patrick, I'm gonna go to Ms. Vickery real quick, Ms. Vickery?
Yeah, it was just a point of clarification for um, Ms. Myers and Mr. Dyer, um because of the Maryland Opens Meetings Act, um, there's some, in in just some of the ways that PGCPS is set up because of policies and legalities, we do not have um, a visual documents that we do, and we, we're not um, using the chat and things like that, um, I think that we may um um, I think it might be, oh, I see Ms. Smith, she's probably gonna jump in with some great information, go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, so I hear you, Ms. Myers, um, and one thing that we just have to do administratively is get yourself as well as Mr. Dyer connected to our Google Docs Drive or our Google Drive, I'm not sure how each subcommittee created their document. Um, and that perhaps satisfied the need to visually see the information, so we can definitely do that, the only thing is that we cannot discuss the document offline, we have to bring all of the discussion to the meeting.
Okay, Ms. Patrick, real quick, quickly, are we gonna move on?
Oh, I think that's a legacy hand, pardon me.
Okay, alright. Um, Ms. Smith, are you finished? Okay, we're gonna move on to, we're gonna address everything that we have in agenda tonight, then we're gonna uh, discuss how we're gonna handle, address how we're gonna approve it or move on, um, I'd like to move on to, go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I'm, I'm so sorry for interrupting you, Chair, so what I heard from Ms. Patrick is that she would like the opportunity to present, present each recommendation individually and have discussion, so I think what we need from you is that if we're okay to proceed in that regard. And I think that that would apply for every subcommittee.
Okay, um, so what I need to do is state that we
You could just tell us yes or no, I think that's fine, this is your call.
Yes, I think it's, yes, I think we should address each one, one by one, as a, um, for each committee to address it that way.
Okay.
To present that way.
Is it okay for me to go ahead, Chair, just introducing the other recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, so recommendation number three, uh, we'd like to suggest to the board to modify the policy to allow flexibility in reporting. Right now, Board Policy seventeen hundred states a annual singular annual uh, report from DIAB, but we'd like to suggest flexibility in reporting, um, and to clearly define the deliverable while allowing reports to be issued as needed. We would like to suggest a minimum reporting standard, not to exceed a specific frequency. In addition to reporting flexibility, um, as Ms. Vickery mentioned earlier, we'd like to recommend that the board update the policy to reflect accurate authority and include references to broader disability-related laws beyond ADA. We want to recommend that the board ensures that these laws are mentioned in the introductory paragraph of the policy. Number five, we'd like to suggest that the board consider implementing staggered appointment terms for DIAB members in order to maintain continuity and avoid starting from scratch with a new group each term. Number six, we'd like to recommend that the board consider either increasing the board by one member to include a compliance specialist who is well-versed in IDEA or to omit ADA from the existing compliance officer role to, that is listed as a recommended board uh, member in the current policy. Uh, by omitting ADA from that existing compliance officer role, it will, it could, could ensure that this position on DIAB represents broader compliance concerns, including IDEA and ADA. So not limiting the scope of the compliance officer so that they can advise us on ADA as well. Number seven, uh, we'd like to recommend that the board mandate the establishment um, and adoption of bylaws that govern the operations of the board. Uh, so for many of us, learning Robert's Rules of Order was a learning curve. Um, it was not, it is not specified in the existing board policy, and so we'd like to recommend that um, the policy be amended to include the adoption of Robert's Rules of Order and stating clear compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And lastly, number eight, we'd like to recommend that the board clearly distinguish the roles and responsibilities of DIAB versus the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. So whether this is done in the policy or outside of the scope of the direct policy, we believe it's important to distinguish um, our role in addressing civil rights concerns for both students and employees um, versus um, C CAC's role and their focus on special education. Lastly, we do have a request, and this is not necessarily a recommendation, um, but we would like to request that the board consider expediting uh, the evaluation and revision of Board Policy seventeen hundred. Um, as mentioned before, it is not currently in the queue, and so we would like an opportunity to either, you know, present and talk to them about why this needs to be expedited, um, or make the recommendation that they consider expediting. And I'd be happy to yield the floor to any other committee members if I am missing anything to expand.
Ms. Smith?
Um, Ms. Patrick, I'm over here trying to find the language, but we also would like the board to consider um, it be written in the policy where there is some type of frequency, whether it's quarterly or not, that this board has an opportunity to meet with the superintendent as well as with the Board of Education, because we are considered an Advisory Board, and currently the policy does not speak to us having any level of engagement with those two bodies. So maybe that's, maybe that's number ten, I think we had nine.
Alright, I like that, I like that. Um. Um, okay, can, um, as I said, we addressed all of these at the end, but I'd like to keep moving. Ms. Vickery, is that okay with you? Because I know you're taking notes. Okay. Um, I'd like to move to five point two. Um, new construction and accessibility of buildings and facilities. Um, it's, Ms. Bowman, um, are you here?
She's currently not here.
Okay, anyone from that committee that can report out?
That might be me, but I wasn't sure what she wanted to report out. Oh, my goodness. One thing that I can state is that, um, we have met. Um, she has a, this, this particular committee has a run-in document of questions and concerns as it relates to access, accessibility to facilities. And, and, um, Ms. Bowman was working directly with the internal stakeholders to get all of the items addressed. Um, so I, I don't know the status of that just yet. So that's pretty much it. We have consolidated everything that has come up as it relates to accessibility. And we've just been trying to work through, um, the channels to make sure that the SMEs can, can address the questions or give commentary to the, to the concern.
Um, Ms. Johnson, can I ask you a question? I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, did, um, I think Ms. Bowman sent like a report. Did you get anything, Ms. Smith?
I don't remember her sending a report specifically to, to DIAB.
Okay, okay.
Again, I know that she's been working internally to get information addressed. So maybe, um, we can just table, um, any action items as it relates to this particular subcommittee until we meet again, um, next month.
Okay, Board Member Brown?
Yes, this is just, um, to your point, um, Chair Blackwell. Uh, Ms. Bowman did send an email regarding the Office of General Counsel um, and how they've responded to the question whether facility, um, is not accessible, is a denial of F A P E. So I don't know. Did you want to present that, Teresa? Or?
I don't think we, did we, I don't think we got a response yet. She did forward it on.
Okay.
But, but that kind of underscores some of the information that was coming over from Ms. Patrick, so.
Okay. Yeah. No worries. I just was, I wanted to make sure that Stephanie knew that, yes, she did send something and.
I, I did get that.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
I like to address, I did go out to one of the schools to see about accessibility, um, which was Duval High School with, um, Board Member, um, Dr. Anafor to look at Duval's field and to look at the condition of the bleachers for accessibility and the sidewalk. Um, one of the parents was at a game that my granddaughter played in at, um, for Law High School. And my main concern was that last year that field was condemned because it was not in proper order for anyone to play on the field. So I went back out there with Dr. Anafor and, um, she came out on the field and she saw what I was talking about, the condition of the field. Um, this, they did say that they're getting new bleachers because the bleachers are sixty-one years old. So they're supposed to be getting new bleachers this year. Um, the condition of the field, the athletic director came out as well, as well as the vice principal and the principal to look at the field. One thing that I did appreciate from Dr. Anafor that she took the time to come out to the school and it was during the week of teacher appreciation. So it was good for her to come out to the building to, to see what I was inquiring about. And as well is to meet the staff in the building, because the vice, one of the vice principals said that the last board member they represented that district had only been in the building one time, one time. And I felt really good that she took the time to come out and to be visible for people to see what's going on. So, um, I did like to let the director know and the principal know that I would be back to see what the field looks like and what the new bleachers would look like and the corrections of the concrete sidewalk that needs to be corrected for accessibility to the field for people who are in wheelchairs and walking with any type of, um, assisted walking device, like walkers or anything of their nature. Um, Ms. Patrick?
I believe Ms. Vickery was before me.
Okay, Ms. Vickery?
Uh, I just wanted to add that, um, the committee also, um, made a suggestion very similar to that of the, um, Board Policy seventeen hundred committee around the language. Um, for, for Policy seventeen hundred and how it relates to new schools. Um, there was, oh, gosh, Ms. Smith, it was, um, AP forty-five, well, right? It was an administrative policy, um, that we are recommending, um, that we have that one updated. It is specifically around school construction. Um, and, and that, that too was another administrative policy that we found to point to, um, ADA compliance from the nineteen hundreds.
And, and Ms. Vickery, that's another one that we may note of, um, for follow-up. So basically, we need to do this consolidation as it relates to policies that may touch Board Policy seventeen hundred, um, and make sure that everything is updated. So, yeah.
Um, Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, ma'am. I did want to clarify, we received communication from, um, Ms. Bowman and a response from Prince George's County, uh, PG County Public Schools Office of General Counsel, um, clarifying that, um, an inaccessible building does not equate to a denial of FAPE. So denial of free, appropriate public education. Um, and an example that, that was given, um, in this email, um, I'm not sure if it was directly from Ms. Bowman or from O G, the Office of General Counsel, um, was that if a school library is inaccessible to a student using a mobility device like a wheelchair, um, that would not be considered a denial of FAPE per IDEA because they could give a list of the books that were in the library to the student to select. And the student would not need to physically go, um, to the library. And so I want to, I, I want to put on record here, um, that while that may be true, Prince George's County Public Schools, which I'm a proud alumni of, should not be in the practice of normalizing ableism. So we talk about racism, we talk about sex sexism. Um, but when we talk about ableism and discrimination against individuals with disabilities, I think that's a perfect example. And so I do hope that, um, this group and the Board of Education considers practices like that as we are ensuring that public education in Prince George's County is equitable, fair, and that our buildings are accessible to all of our students. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Um, I will make sure that this gets back to, because that, perfect example that you just provided here. So I will make sure that this gets back to the subcommittee. I know that, um, she and I had a lengthy discussion about FAPE and it relates, a, as it relates to, um, the accessibility of buildings. And, um, what was mentioned was that the school system could also find another school site for that student. So to your point, you know, what other disadvantages are we making for a person with a disability when we don't have accessible sites? So, so thank you for that. I'll make sure, um, we take it back. So I will yield the floor, uh, Ms. Blackwell, back. I don't, and, and in doing so, I will also just mention, I know that we have to prepare. Well, maybe we don't. I'm gonna just stop. I yield the floor back.
Okay, um, as you mentioned, we will table that, um, report. And Tim Miss Bowman can make that report. Okay, so we're gonna move on to five point three, which is employment and hiring. Um, Ms. Payne is not with us this evening. So Ms. Doyle, will you be able to report out for that committee, for employment and hiring?
That's right. I'm ready to do so, whenever you guys are ready.
Can you present, uh, present, please?
Sure. So we have five recommendations. Okay. The first one, we have spent a lot of time talking about the dedicated aid position. Um, this is a really important position, especially for, you know, some of our, um, most behaviorally challenging kids. And it's one of the most undervalued systemically and underpaid. Uh, they're considered temporary positions. They don't receive any paid time off. They receive little to no training. Any training they receive is just kind of up to the school, so they may receive some or they may receive none. Um, additionally, they make minimum wage, fifteen dollars an hour. Um, they don't get any, again, any vacation time. If their kid, uh, doesn't show up to school and, um, the school doesn't have anything for them to do, they get sent home with no pay. People can work for McDonald's, making more money and having more stability. So, um, we need to make this a more attractive position. Our children deserve better. Uh, there are several ways to achieve this. We can increase the wages beyond the state minimum wage. We could make the position benefit eligible. We could pay DAs even if their charge is out sick. We also need to provide robust paid training to our dedicated aides. They need to attend professional development days along with our teachers. And we were also told that PG CPS does not recruit deliberately for DAs. It's just kind of listed on the website. And again, our kids deserve better. They need to recruit deliberately for that. Um, if none of this can be implemented, then PG CPS must consider hiring, um, ISCA's, Attentive Special Education Assistance. They at least are benefits eligible and have, uh, more stable income. And they must also make non-public placement more streamlined so that, uh, parents don't feel like they have to hire special education attorneys to do so. So that's recommendation one.
Sorry, can you, um, we went through that pretty fast.
Sorry, I, I just uploaded it. I had emailed it, but I just uploaded it to the Google Drive.
Okay, alright, thanks.
So it's like written out, but, um, so you guys can go through all. Um. I see some hands, some questions.
Um, I don't know who raised a hand. First, Ms. Smith, can I recognize you and then go to Mr. Dyer?
I, I think he had his hand up before me.
Okay, Mr. Dyer, can you, um, you have a discussion?
Sure, it has to do with, uh, what was just read back. So, um, I work with PG CPS and we, um, I, I work with a lot of temporary employees. So I'm wondering if this would be a discussion with comp and classification? Um, because they are the ones typically, and I'm not sure if it's, if it's done in this instance, um, that set the pay rates for, um, temporary employees for PG CPS. Um, and I'm not sure what their criteria is. I know that at the building that I work with, for example, we have three levels of, of theater technicians. One's at fifteen twenty-five, one is eighteen thirty-two, and the other is at twenty-two. Um, all of those are set by comp and classification, which is a subdivision of the human resources. And, um, so what I have to do is I have to apply for those positions every year and hope that they get approved. And then they set the, um, the wage. So I'm wondering if it's a similar situation and I'm thinking if we want to find a solution, uh, for that, that perhaps going through comp and classification as this board, uh, might be the best option.
Um, Ms. Smith?
Um, so the first recommendation item is related to the aides. And I think I have been struggling with trying to make the connection. I think it's a legitimate concern. It's a legitimate recommendation. But I'm struggling with the connection to the policy as currently written. So if, I don't know if somebody from the, the subcommittee could help me there. And I, I'm putting my vice chair hat on, because I just want to make sure that when these recommendations go forth, they really can go forth and be something that they could take action to. And I don't want it to get kicked back. So if it means that we need to tweak the language some, you know, we can do so. But I just want to make sure that there's a direct connection to the policy as currently written.
Okay, um, Ms. Myers?
I think I'm probably gonna follow up with Ms. Doyle, because it's, it's the recommendation one. I, I hear part of what's happening. I guess I also need to understand, because I know they're dedicated aides for our students. Um, and I know that they're usually listed, um, as a, a provider in the I E Ps. And what I found in reality is they're listed in the I E Ps. And they're not actually present. So there has to be a way that we marry that up, so that the kids are actually getting what's listed in the I E P and that these dedicated aides are being compensated to make sure that they are showing up for the kids. So I'll probably follow up with you a little bit later. It's a, it's a point of contention with me about the dedicated aides not being available.
Um, can I add to that, Ms., um, Patrick? In your recommendation, um, far is under IDEA, wouldn't that fall, fall under reasonable accommodations?
Um, yes.
Okay.
It could, it could, yes.
Mm-hmm, that would fall under reasonable accommodation. Um, because I know that I proposed, if, if there's a problem hiring an aide, why can't we combine that position with the ICEA? Because this has been, like I said, this has been going on so long when it comes to filling position for a, for a child who, who has it in the I E P. And sometimes when a dedicated aide is hired, if there's a child in the same classroom who needs an aide, sometimes that aide had to work with two children. So, um, maybe, uh, my, Ms. Smith, maybe we can change the language far as when it comes to the dedicated aide asking. Um, I know that Ms. Doyle and Ms. Payne had a meeting with the head of HR, Dr. Murphy Baldwin, regarding that, that position. So, uh, my thing is because that position is always so hard to stay, and you don't get any benefits. Um, and it's been like that forever, um, that that position be a combined position or take that money from that position to combine it to I E S A, um, position. Ms. Smith?
So a few things. Um, the first thing, I know you just asked Ms. Patrick about the tie-in to IDEA. So yes, I E Ps fall under IDEA, but IDEA is not a component of Policy seventeen hundred. So to, to my, my point. So Ms. Doyle and, and even Ms. Blackwell, whoever from the subcommittee.
Yeah, I'm on the subcommittee as well.
If we don't check, if we don't change the language as currently written for the recommendation, was there any discussion with CCAC? Like, could this item move to be pushed, to get pushed through CCAC?
Ms. Doyle?
Um, so Jamie, our chair is, Ms. Payne is on CCAC. We haven't gone into that, but I think just kind of under the umbrella, we were thinking about this under the umbrella of employment and hiring issues, which is kind of our charge. This is a, this is a position that is always got vacancies, um, and as Ms. Blackwell was saying, you know, it's, it's just always been that way. Um.
So if, if, and I hear you, so maybe, maybe we do just tweak the language some. It's a dedicated aide, but, but maybe we don't tie it in to IDEA, um, or FAPE. Because FAPE is, I don't think FAPE falls under this either. But it's just strictly, this is a position type that's not attractive, but is needed for the school system. Uh, and I know that, that I'm, 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 I'm dumbening, dumbening it down. And I'm not trying to do that intentionally, but I really want to make sure that it fits in so that it gets the traction that it needs.
Okay, Ms. Vickery?
Yeah, I just want to, um, suggest to the, um, Hiring, um, and Employment Committee that you kind of like work backwards from that, just because we haven't even presented the recommendations from BP seventeen hundred.
Okay.
Committee yet. And so if, like, if those, if those recommendations aren't presented to the board and the board doesn't accept those recommendations or they don't. like if those if those recommendations aren't presented to the board and the board doesn't accept those recommendations or they don't vote to approve them or they don't update the policy, then it's kind of out of scope. I would suggest doing a concurrent planning, right? So kind of plan B, start talking to CCAC and seeing, is this something they want to take up? And but at the same time, maybe tweaking the language on that recommendation to make sure it squarely falls underneath employment and it doesn't get kicked out in a, so to speak, you know, like you know, hiding the aides underneath.
Mr. Dryer?
So I've sort of been listening to this discussion and wearing two hats, my PG CPS hat and then my father of the father of a child who receives these services hat. And with the dedicated aide, I know as a father, it's like, oh, man, I wish that they were could be there all the time. And then it gets to a point where it's like, if she's having trouble reading, well, anyone like I wouldn't care if it was a student teacher who was helping her read, like anyone who's available to come in and just just add a little support to it. And then from the PG CPS perspective, and I'm just thinking from the technicalities, because I have to apply for temporary positions all the time. I think the problem with the job is that it's classified as a temporary position. And that's the problem. I mean, we could be asking them to change the pay rate of the temporary position, but they're still not going to have benefits because temporary positions don't get benefits. Now, what I do know about what we could potentially request is that there is part-time positions with benefits. I have a custodian who's part-time with benefits. And that's that's technically four hours per day, so twenty hours per week. If they work more than four hours per day, they get paid time and a half, which is the overtime, and that's really not a bad deal if, you know, if you go over the twenty. They actually do also have a three-quarters time employee, and that's very rarely used. And I know this because my custodian has been three-quarters time, halftime, three-quarters. It's bounced back and forth. And that's thirty hours a week. And you know, these positions with part-time with benefits or three-quarters time with benefits is certainly a more attractive because it has the word benefits at the end of it. And then secondly, if they work more than their allotted time, so if they work twenty-four hours that week, they get paid time and a half, which is also an attractive which is also something that that people could could desire when applying for a job. So to me, the issue is that it's a temporary employee job. And um, temporary employees have to go through the same hiring process as a teacher or a substitute. They have to get screened. It all happens the same way. So um, my suggestion would be if we if we want to get this position benefits would be to try to steer away. And we would have to request that a position be created for a dedicated aide that is twenty hours or thirty hours a week or even full-time. I don't know that they could do full-time because it's probably a cost thing, but the part-time with benefits is a thing that PG CPS does, and then they can work more than those twenty hours. So that's just something I just wanted to put out in the universe. Let you guys know from my experience.
Okay, Ms. Myers?
Just a quick comment. I I think, and I'm gonna learn as I go along and do my research. But my understanding is things that are listed in the IEP are not options. If the IEP says that a student gets a dedicated aide, it's not an option. So if it's listed in an IEP, the person of position is needed. And so I guess it seems like what Mr. Dryer says that, you know, maybe what we should recommend is something that leans more towards the fact that the IEP does not allow for the option of a dedicated aide if it's listed as a reasonable accommodation or a resource that's needed for a child with disabilities. So I did not realize that they were temporary positions. I'm learning that today, but I think that if the IEP lists this is what's needed, then we should put recommendations forward that will ensure that the children get what they need.
Ms. Vickery? Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Ms. Patrick was before me.
Oh, Ms. Patrick, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I would just, I just wanted to add that to my knowledge, there is nothing that precludes us from communicating this type of concern with CCAC. In addition, I do think that this is one of the issues that straddles the scope between what is the intent and charge of DAB versus CCAC. Because, you know, the presence of a dedicated aide, yes, would fall under IDEA or, you know, even section five oh four. However, there are some issues that I have heard shared in the county related to, you know, students actually receiving a dedicated aide in a timely manner, and that then is a civil rights issue, right? And so, you know, again, I just think this is one of those topics that we really need more direction from our board members on related to our charge versus the charge of CCAC and who would address something like this.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Uh, Ms. Vickery?
You know what? We're gonna just put this hand down and keep going.
Okay, um, Ms. Doyle, can you um, continue, please?
I sure can. Thank you all for your comments. I've been taking notes while we talk. Next recommendation, sorry, let me get a few. We need um, human resources to um, become more creative, to hire new talent. Our PG CPS human resources currently has a reputation of being slow and not being transparent about their hiring timelines. Uh, there are other jurisdictions in the area that do things like provide promise letters to graduating student teachers. So, you know, they know where they're going to be working. And um, they have that promise letter, but PG CPS doesn't really do that. We acknowledge um, PG CPS has student-based budgeting, so that does make things a little more challenging for PG CPS to be able to guarantee where teachers are going to teach. But we have an incredible teacher shortage nationwide. PG CPS is no exception, and we really need to be recruiting and retaining talented teachers. Also underneath of this, uh, PG CPS needs to offer competitive salary and benefits. Basic, um, it is not currently competitive. I'm not sure. The opinion you, the opinion you get depends on who you ask, but people, teachers are telling us that the salary and benefits packages are not competitive. We also need to see PG CPS supporting students with more of the non-teaching staff, such as social workers and counselors. When when those positions are appropriately staffed, then teachers can do more focus on teaching. PG CPS does currently have some therapists available to students, but they're only available to uh, certain students who have health insurance through particular companies. This isn't equitable and it's not a long-term solution. One interesting tidbit we heard in our conversations was that PG CPS is kind of known in the DC area as the jurisdiction that trains great teachers, provides great professional development. And then they get their, you know, they get their experience and they go off somewhere else to make more money. And this is such a shame, and our students deserve to have teachers who have stayed in our jurisdiction for a long time, and um, our students deserve to have uh, the teachers have benefited from that professional development. And I open the, if I'm allowed, I'd open the floor for any questions, comments.
Any discussions on what Ms. Doyle has presented to the committee? If there's no discussions, we're gonna move on to six point O to new business. Is there any new business for the committee this evening?
Ms. Blackwell, I still have more recommendations.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. I'm sorry. My apologies.
No problem. Number three, staff members requesting reasonable accommodations are not receiving prompt responses to their requests. Uh, for the first half of twenty twenty-three, average days to determination stood at about thirty-two days. It's okay. Um, but now since that time, it stands at more than a hundred days since the third quarter of PG uh, third quarter of twenty twenty-three, PG CPS has got to do better. Um, and a reasonable interim goal would be PG CPS bringing its average back down to thirty days, but really it should be a maximum of thirty days for staff to be able to receive a response to their disability determinations. Our staff members deserve their reasonable accommodation requests, and they deserve not to have to come out of pocket. We heard about somebody um, who took five months to get an accessible keyboard. And our students, our students with disabilities deserve to see themselves represented in the staff of Prince George's County. I have a couple more, but I want to leave space if people have questions or comments.
Do anyone have any discussions or comments on, um, was that topic number three, Ms. Um, Doyle? Ms. Smith, did you have your hand up first because all of them came up at the same time?
Ms. Vickery can go.
Ms. Vickery, uh, go ahead, please.
And did you, um, Ms. Doyle, that the subcommittee come up with like a cadence uh, for any reporting back on um, reasonable accommodations requests? Or was it just a recommendation to the board to bring the average down?
We, we didn't dig deeper than that. We don't have, we we spoke to HR, but then they told us that those kind of accommodations are through legal, the legal department, and we have been trying and uh, not yet been able to meet with the legal department to talk about this issue.
I would suggest um, to update the recommendation um, to actually give a cadence. So that they give a prescription to them. So I'm I'm recommending back to the subcommittee to 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 give a prescription out to to your essential, your recommendation to the board to consider, instead of leaving it open-ended for the board to come up with their own or even for central office to come up with their own. I I suggest you guys make it prescriptive and say, you know, a report should come out every quarter and it should, the timely metric should be this, you know, SMART goals, make them you know, easy, accessible, attainable, things like that. I I I think that should be added to that recommendation.
So the thirty days, you think is?
No, I just, it's, you're saying bring it down to a maximum of thirty days, but how do you expect them to report that out and how do you expect them to do that?
Uh, Ms. Smith? Or was it Ms. Patrick? I want to make sure I don't call anybody out there.
Yeah, I think it's me next. So I guess sort of on the same lines of Ms. Vickery. But I'm just kind of curious, is there any insight as to why these timeframes are so long? I know you just mentioned that you guys are trying to work through legal, but like, what's the bottleneck? And then I'm wondering, could the recommendation also include what do, what should staff do or is there some some type of um, autonomy that the supervisor can have in providing some some reasonable accommodation to a staff member knowing that it's taken X amount of days to get a request reviewed? I mean, because again, we're dealing with a person with a disability and they may need an accommodation immediately. So so I would just only, if there is no additional insight as to why, I think we should also add some type of information where the the supervisor has some type of autonomy to address it while it's formalized.
We don't know why, but what I can tell you is that not trying to call anybody out necessarily, but the switch in timelines happened with our switch from uh, Dr. Goldson to Dr. House.
Ms. Patrick?
Yep, uh, thank you so much, Chair. I just wanted to share that this is information that we en- we uncovered based on a FOIA request that I submitted to the district around these specific timelines. And um, thank you, Ms. Doyle. What was also uncovered from that request is there is an administrative procedure that requires the equity officer to report to the superintendent specific data points around reasonable accommodation requests within a given year. It was shared that this administrative procedure is not being followed and that a report is not being given on an annual basis. And so I do believe that there just may be some oversight gaps related to knowledge of this timeline and um, resolutions for expediting reasonable accommodation requests for staff. So I think it's it's an oversight issue.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Ms. Doyle?
Sorry, let me unmute. This one hit me as a social worker, but I recently discovered that uh, social workers, we are we have master's degrees, most of us, and we are well-trained. We have a supervision and a licensure process. And um, I recently discovered that you need to PG CPS, this is not all school districts, uh, social workers are not allowed to provide resources to parents that have not been vetted through the legal department. What, it's such an incredible waste of time and resources, and this slows down social workers in doing their jobs and we have advanced, again, we have advanced degrees. We also, this also, like if a food referral comes up quickly, it it's it's gone. It's not something that social workers can provide to um, families because legal will take time to have to review it, and so we need to allow professionals to do the jobs that they have been trained to do in this respect.
Uh, Ms. Vickery?
Ms. Doyle, I'm sorry, what? As your fellow social worker, I'm sorry, what? Like it has to go through the legal department first?
It's kind of insulting to social workers too, like we're not good enough in our job, right?
We have to go through almost eight years of training. We have to do four years of undergrad, two years of graduate school, and then we do an additional three years of licensed training, and then when we go to get our LCSW or LCISW, we do an additional two years of training. So we essentially go to medical school. So I I'm I'm it has to go through legal? But I can bill insurance and I can have a private practice, but I gotta talk to legal to tell you that the food bank is open?
Yeah.
Okay. Board Member Brown, okay.
Again, this is not, uh, this is this is not typical. Uh, social workers are licensed healthcare professionals. For those of you who are not social workers.
Okay, um, Ms. Doyle, any other recommendations?
Last one, the last one is surrounding parent volunteers. Parent volunteers are a valuable addition to the school community. They bring diverse skill sets and bridge the gap between home and school environments, but a lot of Prince George's parents report being told that they're not allowed to volunteer at their kids' schools. This isn't acceptable, and you know, there are things that parents could do that could make, you know, we can't be teachers, but we can maybe help fill in some gaps to give teachers more ability to focus on teaching. We would like uh, PG CPS to do a analysis, determine which schools make maximum use of volunteer policies and you know, provide a formal recognition on the PG CPS website and social media of schools who do utilize parent volunteers as well.
Any um, discussions on the points that Ms. um, Doyle has brought up? Um, Board Member Brown?
Thank you so much, Chair Blackwell. I just wanna, just for situational awareness, um, for anyone who does volunteer with PG CPS, they do have to go through an extensive background application, screening, and they also have to do training. screening, and they also have to do training, um, related to student safety. And so, um, just for situational awareness, when I was a teacher, there were parents who wanted to volunteer. However, they did not want to take the necessary steps in getting fingerprinted. They didn't want to take the necessary steps to take the training. And so I think part of the recommendation would also, if you all want to do an analysis, to also see if those steps and those guidelines are being presented to parents prior to them wanting to volunteer. Um, because I will say when my kids were, uh, in elementary school during back-to-school night, they gave us like a checklist, like this is how you can volunteer. And they gave us the address and they gave us exactly what needed to be done. Um, especially for parents like me, when I had, well, well, my kids are in high school now, but when they were in kindergarten, I didn't know where to start. I thought, I thought I could just come into the school. Um, and so I think there needs to be, um, an analysis on that. And of course, um, just a continuous education portion on how parents can get more involved to volunteer. Because we love our volunteers. We love our parents who, who take charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Brown. Um, Ms. Myers and then Ms. Smith?
Just really quickly on the volunteer, um, policy. Um, I understand the policy. I am a school volunteer. I've done all of the background check and everything else. Uh, so was my mom. Um, but I wonder if part of that policy creates a barrier uh, to access and support. I think that I understand the background check, I understand the fingerprinting, I understand the basic safety classes. But I think there is another way to present it so that it's not so cumbersome for parents to be able to volunteer, especially if they're volunteering to, uh, supervise the kids while you're on the trip to the zoo. Um, or, you know, some basic classroom, you know, management, you know, some things like that. But I think that the policy should not create those barriers. And then once you do all of that, the school still has to reach out to have you volunteer. And so I am a volunteer in waiting. I've made myself available. So, um, we do this every year. We've done it every year for the last at least five years. Um, and we're still volunteers in waiting, so.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Uh, Ms. Smith? Then Ms. Vickery and then Ms. Doyle.
So I would say that I absolutely love this recommendation. I, I, I think that you guys are thinking outside of the box. I also think that there are a group of volunteers that's out there that want to be utilized, not just, and I've, I've provided public comment on this, not just to chaperone on a field trip or look at the lunch room when the kids are eating. Like, we are group, there's a group of people who literally have a good skillset that want to be utilized in the schoolhouse. So, to Ms. Brown, I do think that one of the barriers that we have when it comes to volunteers are the schoolhouses. Like, we need our administrators to see us more than just a parent or, um, a person from the community, you know, really, you know, have that conversation with us to see how can we be best utilized. So I'm, I'm really for this particular recommendation.
Ms. Vickery?
I have a point of clarification from Ms. Brown and then a comment, um, which would you guys like first?
Um, Board Member Brown?
Um, Board Member, you said, oh, um, you said that there, you, you're suggesting the subcommittee do an analysis between those who volunteer and?
Yeah, so essentially those who actually do take the next steps to get the fingerprints, do the trainings, because it is extensive to become a volunteer. Um, like I said, now that my kids are in high school, they don't even want me volunteering. But for those who are, you know, starting kindergarten, I think it's important, right? Can you imagine me being in the high school? Uh, yeah, so I think that it is going to be, um, vital for us to kind of get an understanding. If the schools are giving the information, are parents following through? Are they able to go to get their fingerprints done, taking the, the, um, the background trainings needed, um, those type of things? So, does that help, Ms. Vickery?
Yeah, thank you. And Ms. Doyle, um, I wanted to suggest, um, I want to suggest, a- and I guess this is a question for, um, Board Member Brown and Ms. Johnson. When we have a board policy, does it always have an administrative policy that attaches to it? It does. I see a lot of yeses. Okay, so my suggestion to Ms. Doyle is that, um, you guys update the recommendation to have an administrative policy. And I would suggest two things. One, an administrative policy that maybe the local schools keep a list of those um, who are approved and can add them into those time slots, right? Like Ms. Myers said, they went to the, to the zoo. All the teachers wanted to go, but they needed somebody to, to, to watch the kids during lunch or something like that. Um, also, I would add into that, that administrative policy, um, an option around, um, oh, gosh, did I just lose it? Yes, I did, adding that example. Um, oh, here it goes, um, around the marketing of it, because I thought about accessibility and how it was for me to get all the way from down here in District Eight all the way up to Largo while I'm, you know, able to do that. But to get all the way up, it's business hours, it's eight to five. You know, I just happen to have a job that I can maneuver that way, but not everyone does, right? So they want to volunteer. So maybe, um, adding that the volunteer office does, um, volunteer days at different schools or different districts or even at district meetings, something like that to make it more accessible. Uh, and, and thinking around that, around, hey, we are DAB, um, so making it more accessible to volunteer.
Um, thank you, Ms. Vickery, uh, Ms. Doyle, and then Mr. Dryer.
Again, I appreciate all these comments. I've been taking notes, um. I was literally told when my child was in kindergarten that the school did not allow volunteers, um. Field trips or whatever, but then, you know, COVID shut everything down. But I was literally told no volunteers in the school, um. Turned out it was because there were problems in that school. They were probably trying to hide them, but, um, I just want to make sure you knew that, Ms. Brown, like, it's not, it, I believe there's an accessibility issue. I believe there are peo- people don't want to do it all. Um, I think somebody maybe can correct me if I'm wrong. If a child is on free lunch, parents can get fingerprinted for free. And if a child is on reduced lunch, they can pay a lower fee. Yeah, I see head nods, so that's good. Okay, so there is some, but I agree the timing. And just because we're not on free or reduced meals doesn't mean we're living large. So, you know, if there are a way for that fee to be more accessible, I hear that too.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Um, Mr. Dryer?
Yeah, so this is, this has been a really excellent con- conversation. I'm really happy to be a part of this board, uh, in this first meeting. So, uh, thank you for the appointment, um. So, my wife and I are go-tos for, you know, things like field trips. She got fingerprinted and all that. I'm already an employee, so I take a day off leave to go on a field trip. Um, you know, that's kind of, kind of where we're at. And, and the way that my wife communicates with the first and second grade teacher, because I have two, is she'll, oh, I'm not going to be able to come this time, but my husband is going to be able to come and do this. And that sort of commu- communication is really building community. And I think each school and each district has their own culture of how they, um, communicate with their students and how they communicate with the, uh, the community. So build, each school can build a commu- uh, build, you know, just build their community in a way that, um, they recognize these people that are, uh, volunteers. You know, like, what, uh, not that these volunteers really need an incentive to volunteer, but it's like, if, if we have a relationship with the student's teacher, it's easier for us to volunteer um, with that particular, um, school even. Um, so really, um, part of it to me is that the schools can go out of their way to be more welcoming for these volunteers so that they do pay the sixty-two, sixty-three dollars or whatever it is to fingerprint, so that they know when they're in the system, they can be available for first grade, second grade, third grade, you know, all the way up until, uh, middle school as they're needed. So it's really, to me, like, we have a pretty strong, um, volunteer following at Tulip Grove Elementary. And I think it's because the principal and the vice principal, all of them are very welcoming to parents. They want parents to be there. And I think each school has their own sort of culture and how, how they welcome the, the students or, uh, welcome the volunteers, um, should be considered carefully. We don't want people to think that they're, that they're volunteers in waiting, um, to use a phrase that Ms. Myers had talked about, because that, that kind of turned my head a little bit. You know, you put in the work for it and you're, you seem committed. So, uh, I guess a question for me is, is there sort of a list? Does each school have a list of people that are volunteers that are certified? Does each district, is it school-wide? Like, how, how does that work, if anybody knows?
Um, Board Member Brown, you hit your hand up.
So, I don't know how it works on the admin side. I can tell you anecdotally, my experience, um, is that one would assume after you've gone through the volunteer process and you've watched the videos and everything's been approved, that that approval then gets sent to the district and to the individual school. Um, however, I was told that, you know, that did not happen, um, because I, I did reach out just to cover all bases, um, to our local school and say, hey, just a heads up, this was approved just in case you didn't get it. And sometimes there's time delay, blah, 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 um. And so I was told anecdotally, this is two years or three years ago now, that they do not get notified. Um, so, again, this is, this is one example, but if that is to be the case, that seems like a glaring omission. Um, but also something that could, with some backend kind of web developing updates, which always sound easy, but I know are, are never really easy, um. But that, that should be relatively seamless, um. But yeah, so that's, I don't know, hopefully that's, that's helpful. But in my experience, like I said, it, it was like that information went into a black hole.
Um, Board Member Brown, and then we will hear from Ms. Vickery and then, um, Erica, I'm sorry, that's your last name. So Board Member Brown, okay. Board Member Brown, you hit your hand up.
Yeah, no, just, um, just for situational awareness regarding the volunteer. Um, parents, once they do get their fingerprints, there is a receipt that they actually have to present to the school, um, as collateral, just basically showing proof. It, it cannot go through a system, uh, because they have to actually see the physical proof that, uh, you did get fingerprinted and that, uh, PG CPS is aware that you are able to go into the school. So just kind of for situational awareness, that's part of the security to ensure that, uh, families are showing the, the valid proof that they are eligible to volunteer over. Oh, and I did want to say one more thing, Ms. Doyle, uh, you are valid in what you are, what you said. I think, um, I just wanted to make clarity. I didn't want it to seem as if I was saying, oh, that doesn't happen. No, it does happen and you are valid and I appreciate you, you all sharing.
Uh, Ms. Vickery and then Ms. Erica, please.
Um, so, w- like Board Member Brown said, once you show your, um, fingerprints, um, my understanding is then that the school, um, whomever they have identified in their front office staff then has to, like Ms. Byrne said, pull you from the black hole. Um, you are not essentially assigned right away, although you do identify your school that you are, um, volunteering for and you do identify, um, the school year that you're volunteering for. Um, and even if you get the, uh, twelve, what is it, eleven years there in school, there in school, I don't know how many years these kids in school. Even though you get that full timeline of sixty-five dollar fingerprint, um, you still have to go in and be pulled back out every single time. Um, so I agree with Ms., uh, Byrne, and I would say just Ms. Doyle, that maybe adding a suggestion that there's some type of backend web update done so that when someone does apply to Tulip Grove, they are automatically attached or pushed into a queue for Tulip Grove to see. Um, and then that, that would probably solve, um, like solve the, the situation there, because then it's already attached and they can just see whether or not they've tracked along. Um, because right now you have to do the fingerprints, then finish the trainings, then email the training certificates to school and then wait for somebody to find you from the black hole.
Um, Ms. Erica, thank you, Ms. Vickery.
I was just going to comment, I think that, um, I guess every school is operating differently. In the schools that I've been able to volunteer and like they've, after they've received my, or have submitted everything, they normally email me to confirm that I've, like, gone through the process and I, I can start volunteering. So I don't know, there should be a better system to allow or inform volunteers that they have gone through and they can now start.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Uh, Ms. Wingate Robinson pretty much just touched on the point that I wanted to make. So, yes, we, we get to a list. I am a parent with children in two different schools. And one of the school, I guess, one of the schools I believe is like the lead in basically pulling me out of this black hole and assigning or checking off in a system that I'm good to go. And sometimes it can be frustrating because now I'm ready to volunteer at the other school, but now I'm waiting on the, this other school to take the action. So, yeah, the, on the back end, I think that the process can definitely be improved.
Thank you, Ms., um, Smith. I'd like to add to that process, um. I was looking at some of the school websites throughout Pre- Prince George's County. I only saw one school, uh, which was, um, the Academy of Health and Science, located in Prince George's Community College. They had on their website that the process that you go through to become a volunteer. So for parents who want to become a volunteer, I think, I thought that was really good to see that on their website. So parents can see the information there and know how to go through it. But then, on the backside of that, when you go to get fingerprinted, it takes forever, more than forty-five days to be fingerprinted, to get your appointment to be fingerprinted. So that, that kind of holds up the process of a person becoming, to be able to be a volunteer as well. Doyle, do you have anything else you would like to add to your recommendations from the committee?
That is the end of our recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to have any other comments? Um, I'd like to move on to six point O, new business. Are there any, uh, requests by the Razzie Board for new business? Um, both hands came up at the same time, so I'm gonna go with Ms. Myers and then Ms. Smith.
My, mine is just a quick kind of comment, um, especially for new board members. Um, and I don't know if you all do this, is there like an orientation session, um, for the new board members to help us get better acclimated? Um, some kind of process, how to make sure that we're connected to the Google Drives, to make sure that we are getting the right information? Because I wanted to prepare for this meeting because I did not necessarily know what you all had already gone through. And it would be great if we could get some kind of orientation and access to historical information so that we can come better prepared. Um, I mean, this has been great so far. I've learned a lot, but still feel like, um, I'm lacking.
I do agree, because it's still new to me as well. Ms. Smith?
So to address your question, Ms. Myers, yes, we will have a on-boarded session. Um, we threw yourself as well as Mr. Dyer right into this. Um, the request came over from the board member's office. And I said, since you all are filling vacancies and the meeting was here, yes, allow them to come on. So, yeah, we're, we're, we're there. We're going to make sure that you all are on-boarded. Um, but I will also say, we all were thrown into this fire. We're, we're, we're learning and operating, operating together. But, yeah, we'll make sure that you guys are up to speed on where we are thus far. I will also say, um, as far as historical information, we're trying to get better at that, hence of creating the, the Google, um, Drive. Um, it, it has been, or having access or knowing where historical information has been housed has been a little difficult. Um, but when, when the board office does find it, they do make sure that it comes over to us. So we will make sure that you have access to whatever we have already been privy to. So thank you for that question. Ms. Blackwell, um, I have a few things. Is, is it okay if I have the? Ms. Blackwell, um, I have a few things. Is it okay if I have the floor? Thank you. So the first thing, uh, Ms. Brown, this is for you. I'm not sure if I saw a date. For DIAB to go to the um to go to the board. So I wanted to know, is there a date yet? And then do we know how much time we have? And so those two questions are for you and then for the board itself. Um, I think we need to decide. What what's what's our tangible thing? I know we've already talked about not doing our annual report just yet. But is there any preliminary information that you all wish to be shared at that time? So that um. You know, Chair Blackwell and myself would know how to document that and and make sure that you all are well represented. And actually, there's another question for you, Ms. Brown. Because I, we were talking about it with Ms. Johnson. Is DAB doing the presentation or are you, is it a talking point from for? Okay, I figured it's probably BS.
From my understanding, it is, I. I like when you guys present. I can do it, but I feel like the voice is better when it comes directly from you all. Uh, so they could see the, you know, the emotion, they could understand, and it doesn't just come from. My biases or whatever that may look like, um, but it actually come from constituents. Who care, who do this work, who are constantly on the ground doing this work. And so. Uh, it was my understanding that you all will be presenting. I will check back with um the board office to see. Um, what exactly, I think the time, because typically I don't think when they do presentations, they don't have more than. Five minutes to you, from my understanding. Um, and so it has to obviously be a very impactful five minutes. Um, and Teresa and 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 Chair Blackwell, excuse me, Vice Chair Smith and I'm Chair Blackwell. If you all want to, um, we can kind of have like a side conversation on exactly. What you all would like to discuss and I could just give recommendations. Um, based on what I hear from other board members, what they would like to hear. Um, and based on the information we we have been tracking, I'm asking from the administration. We can actually discuss those as well. Um, I hope that answered your questions that you had. There was something else I feel like you asked, but.
No, I think you covered it all. Um, then the other thing that I I don't want to call it new business, but I think it's a point. It's a point that needs to be said because I was sitting in um a session from my district. And there seems to be a misunderstanding on what. CCAC does as well as what is DIAB. Um, because a comment was made there and I'm like, oh, no, that's not, that's not it. So. I I think that we need to, I think that the public needs to be aware about both of these these councils. Or advisory boards. Um, I think that that. We need to handle that. And let me just say it like that. It needs to be handled so that there is no confusion. Outside of the policy, I mean, plain language, what do these, what what's the intention of of both of these um groups? Then, um, the other thing that I wanted to mention. We went over recommendations tonight. Um, some of this information may go forward. Um, when we have this presentation, and I just want everybody to just really think of these recommendations in the. In the um, in the sight of or in the context of governance. Um, what is acceptable? How are we as a district planning to be consistent? What's the legality behind everything? You know, our intention is not. To remove the authority from other groups at all. It's literally to build this consistency. It is a policy document and when you think of policy. Or or maybe let me say it like this, we need to think of it in the context of policy. It's as simple as that. You got statute, you get regulatory, um, you get the regulations from the statute, then you get the policy. So I just wanted to also mention that and I yield the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Vice Chair, um, Ms. Vickery, you had your hand up and then Ms. Patrick.
I I I was actually wanted to ask for a point of clarification from the Chair, Vice Chair and Board Member Brown. Um, it was my understanding that subcommittees were coming back this meeting to present the recommendations. To prepare a potential uh presentation for the board for June. We're at May twentieth. Do we? Do we need to identify a second meeting to put together that presentation? And to essentially vote on what we're putting forward? Or is that something that the Chair, Vice Chair and Board Member Brown. Um, plan to discuss um at that get together and I do apologize. The two PG CPS students have arrived home.
Um, Ms. Patrick and then Ms. Smith.
Ms. Vickery essentially asked my question. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Ms. Smith?
So, um, first, Ms. Vickery, you just reminded me that I think you were going to be taking the lead on this item. But, um. To your point, I think tonight, we need to decide if what was presented. Is what we want to move forward for these recommendations. I do realize that the subcommittee from um facilities did not present anything, but. I hope I'm not speaking. I hope that I'm representing my subcommittee. I'm not the chair. But I don't think that we even have recommendations at this time. Um, but we may have some information that maybe we may wish to to share. So in that said, I think tonight we do need to. Decide from the other two subcommittees, are we okay to move forward with that information? And then in my mind. That gives us the op, us as the exec board to have the discussion with Ms. Brown. This is what we want to go forward with. Um, especially so that she can communicate with her board members in case they have questions. She'll have that that level of insight to be able to be our voice. So I think we just need to to decide tonight what's what's going forward.
Both hands came up at first, so I'm gonna go with Ms. Patrick first and then I go to Board Member Brown.
This is actually a question for Board Member Brown. Um, is there an opportunity for us to actually have dialogue? With the board um around some of these recommendations?
I think that's a, that's an excellent question. Um, so the 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 first thing that I want to address, Ms. Patrick and to Ms. Um Vickery. Is that um we have to be very careful about um scheduling meetings because we don't want to have any OMA violations. Um, and so that's why I kind of just said, hey, you know, we have two people. I can basically speak to them and, you know, it can take it from there. However, if we need to make an additional meeting. Uh, we have to go through the board office to put that on the schedule. Um, when it comes to having a dialogue with the full board, that would be a recommendation that I would have to give to the Chair. Of the board. Um, he would have to accept that and he would actually have to put that on the calendar. Um, and so that's not a decision that I would make. That's actually the decision that the board chair would make, but I could make a recommendation on that. Over.
Ms. Vickery?
Um, Chair, I'm just asking if we can have some discussion. Provided the information we just got from Board Member Brown.
Yeah, as a committee, can we discuss the recommendations that has already been put put forth before the committee? And then I have a um a kind of question for Board Member Brown myself.
Ms. Blackwell, may I be recognized?
Oh, yes, um, go ahead, um, Vice Chair.
So I think that we've had the discussion. I I think we just, from a procedural standpoint. I I I guess I feel like the Chair or the subcommittee chairs just need to make the motion. And we we move forward from there.
Um, Ms. Myers?
So I guess my question is again about the procedures and the process, because when we started. With the first set of recommendations, um, you put forth a motion about the name and then the motion didn't pass. So now are we gonna move into a phase where we're talking about moving what forward? If the motion didn't pass for the the name change, then what are we moving forward?
Chair, if I could be recognized.
Okay, uh, Ms. Vickery.
Um, so so that motion didn't pass around the name change, but there's several recommendations that have been discussed. My question, um, and and to clarify my question, because I think it will help Ms. Myers out. My question um to the Chair and Vice Chair is, do we want to go through and have motions on? Every single recommendation or do we want to have a motion on a block of recommendations from board? Um, from Subcommittee seventeen hundred and then the block of recommendations from Hiring Committee. I I'm asking for like some structural structure here. So how would you like to do it? So that I can set these screens up and prepare for it. One, but also two. Um, just kind of so we have going forward. And then I am saying this for the rest of the Advisory Board. Um, you also to be, to recognize that if the motion doesn't. Sound the way you would like it and you would like to amend it, you do have the option to. Um, ask to be recognized by the Chair or Vice Chair so that you can amend. The motion, I'm not making a motion, I'm just asking a structural thing here. So then that maybe different advisory members can decide which way we're gonna go. Does that make sense, Ms. Blackwell and Ms. Ms. Smith? I'm asking, do you want us to do? Each recommendation or blocks of recommendation per subcommittee?
Ms. Smith?
So I was trying to get this clarified myself early on. So what I, what I think we should do. Is if the subcommittee chairs and Chair Blackwell, if you are okay with this. That that the motion is based on the block. Of recommendations, with the exception of the motion that we had earlier related to the name change. So we already clarified how we were gonna move forward with that.
I'm in agreement with you, Vice Chair, to move along in blocks and I do one by one.
Um, can I, I'm sorry, Chair, if I may interject. So, yes, you can do it that way. You don't have to do it one by one. You could just. Um, do all of the recommendations together as a block and then just um. Say the language could um would be, the question is, shall the committee? Whatever the motion is gonna be moved forward with the recommendations to the board and if there aren't any objections, then the motion is adopted. But if there are um an objection, then there will be a discussion and then it will have to proceed to, I believe, a roll call vote would happen next.
Vice Chair, so we agree, um, if the committee agrees that we moved. Um, regarding the recommendations, we address them in the block. And then someone can make a motion and then we can decide on the vote.
So will you be doing the motion? It essentially, I think it's just going to be two motions upfront initially.
Okay, um, Ms. Vickery, before we.
So, I'm sorry, ma- ma- um, Chair, if I can just kind of clarify, and I don't know, ma- maybe we're saying the same thing or not. What you could do is just run down all of the recommendations as one motion. And if anyone objects to that, then there will be discussion. Then there will have to be a roll call vote, because the objection would be a new motion. And then um you'd have to do an actual roll call vote. But if no one objects, then the motion would be adopted. And you could move forward after that.
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, so Chair Blackwell, do you need each subcommittee chair to run, to do their list? Do you need, do you need the subcommittee chairs to do the motion, I guess is the question?
Yes, I need the subcommittee chairs to do the motion. And um. Ms. Vickery, can you um? Read the recommendation for each, I guess, how wanted that, can Ms. Vickery read the recommendation of each each committee?
Yeah, that that I actually was gonna suggest that, Chair. I could go back.
So I I I'm sorry, can I just interject one more time? Because this is the Board of Education. I know how they do it. Usually the Chair would read. Um, would do the motion.
I wasn't doing a motion, I was just gonna refresh everybody's memory. They can do the motion. I just, because we, we've been here for two hours. I just, I wasn't. Just bringing back to the notes to kind of just say, this is what Subcommittee seventeen hundred talked about. And and whoever is going to do the motion can go from there.
Got it.
Um, but Ms. Uh Chair Blackwell, you, Ms. Doyle has had her.
Ms. Doyle, I was gonna address her. Thank you, Ms. Vickery.
Just a quick question, because I think the substance of my group's recommendations will be unchanged. But based on feedback from folks here, um, I think there will be some tweaks. So. I'm wondering, like, is it okay to vote on it and then have some tweaks afterwards? Or do we need to make the tweaks first and then vote? Like I said, I don't see the substance. We're not flipping opinions, you know, we're just tweaking.
Um, Ms. Vickery?
Um, you could make the motion in a way where you say, um, we are presenting the recommendations. Um, with the knowledge that we will be adding or making some um additional cha- I wouldn't say changes, but you know, like. There's a way you could say where we we will be adding the recommendations received tonight to those. Already identified recommendations, like that's how you can say it.
But uh do that and then when tweaking it, we we can say with necessary changes.
Correct, correct.
Okay, Ms. Vickery? Whenever you're ready.
Sorry, I had to find what page we were at, because we're, we're on like six pages. Um, Subcommittee seventeen hundred um made a recommendation, um. I'm just mentioning this, this is not, but made a recommendation to change the name. Um, that motion was um did not pass. On either name changes, the motion that did pass and carry was to present both name changes to the full board. So that will be part of whatever document and presentation we provide to the board. Um, recommendation two was to update the scope of board policy seventeen hundred, to expand the charge of the app. Um, to ensure that is inclusive of ADA title, title, um, five oh four. IDEA and several other um federal le- locally, local and federal statutory requirements. Um, recommendation three was to amend the policy to change for flexibility in reporting. Um, provide a prescriptive, um, a a flexible but more prescriptive reporting timeline. Um, there was al- along with a minimum standard of the report. Recommendation. One, two, three, four. Four was to update the um accurate authority. Of war policy seventeen hundred and make sure it is beyond ADA. Five was um a recommendation of standard staggered appointment terms for DIAB members. Six, increasing the board, the advisory board by one member to include a compliance specialist. Uh, specifically versed in IDEA, um, and to omit just specifically focused on ADA. Um, to coincide with the expansion of policy seventeen hundred. And, um, additionally mandate the establishment and adoption of bylaws that govern the adoption of the board. Um, and it, because it's not specified currently that the. Or follows Robert Rules of Order and compliance with Maryland Open Rules, Open Meetings Act. And clearly distinguished roles between. DIAB and CSAC. And consider the ca- and um. Add a cadence for DIAB to meet with the superintendent and the full PG CPS board. Um, to provide feedback.
Um, Ms. Patrick?
Yes, I'd like to motion to accept. Um, the or to move forward with the board policy seventeen hundred recommendations as they are presented.
Will that be anyone to second that motion?
Second.
I second the motion.
Ms. Vickery, did you capture that? Ms. Um, Sarah B., did you, um, you had your hand raised?
Sorry, yes, I seconded it. Thank you.
Ms. Vickery, did you record that? Ms. Vickery?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, you tell me, uh huh. Um, can you go to the report from, um, Ms. Doyle?
Chair, you have, um. Chair, you have um, you have to ask whether or not there is any
Is there any objections to the motion from the committee? If there's no motion, it is accepted?
And our um Vice Chair Smith, I just want to point a clarification, we are, are we moving, are are we going over um? No, got you, we're I just wanted to make sure I remembered that the students came in when when you were talking about that, okay, thank you. Um, so we are moving past um new construction and building Subcommittee at this time. Um, as there are not recommendations to add to the report, but there will be um, maybe uh what do I wanna say, enhancements to supply to um the report that's provided to the board. The recommendations from the Employment and Hiring Subcommittee were to make the position of the aid um benefit eligible, robust paid training, professional development, availability, um deliberate recruitment, um and potential change in the type of aid that is hired. Si- secondary suggestions, um HR to be more um transparent in their hiring and hiring timelines, provide promise letters, stu- promise letters to new incoming staff, offer competitive salaries and benefits, support students with more non-teaching staff like counselors and social workers and therapists. Um, look at the way that therapists are within the schools and ensure that it is more equitable. Recommendation three, staff members requesting accommodations to ensure that accommodations requested by staff members are met within a thirty day timeline as well as following the current policies and administrative procedures surrounding um reasonable accommodation requests from staff. Recommendation four, review the policy around social workers providing resources to staff and students. Um, currently, the policy requires that all resources are vetted through the legal department, which can cause delays. Recommendation five, update and provide additional services to ensure that parent volunteers are available um to schools and to students in need. Did I miss anything, Ms. Doyle? No, okay.
That was great.
Oh, would you like to make a um motion?
I'd like to motion to adopt these recommendations.
Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Ms. Ms. Smith, you have your hand up.
I know, we got the motion on the floor, but I think the motion needs to be amended, um, and I guess I may need to amend it. Uh, um, I move that we amend the motion to accept the recommendations as presented and considering the additional changes from the discussion.
Anyone like to second that um amended motion, second motion?
I second that.
Any objections? Any objections? It is move that is accepted with the amended second motion. Ms. Vickery?
Nope, I have it captured, um, both motions carried, um with no objections.
Okay, we um, I'd like to move on to, we didn't discuss new business, six point oh. New business, do we have any new business for the committee this evening?
Chair, we're in new business now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is new business, I'm sorry, stand corrected, Ms. Vickery. Um, um, since I like to, is there any other? Go ahead, Ms. Um, Vice Chair Smith.
Um, Chair Blackwell, I guess, um, one of the items that I presented was about you know, having some comms around the two groups, so I guess um, I wanted to know where do we stand with that? Moving forward with that regard, is is the board, I guess the question is, is the board okay if the two groups work together to develop messaging? And then is somehow shared with the community?
Uh, what is the pleasure of the the committee?
So I guess the question is, are there any objections with CAC and DIAB working together to draft language as it relates to our functions? So that our community stakeholders can be aware.
Is there any discussion with um Vice Chair's word, uh, Ms. Patrick?
This is an area that I'd really like our board members to weigh in on. Um, you know, I think the very nature of our Board Policy seventeen hundred recommendations, one of them is for the board to provide clarity on the role of DIAB. And so I think, eh, even in when I'm thinking about approaching a co-constructed um charge, you know, with CAC, which would be great. Um, we can't do that if we are not, we don't have clear direction from our uh board on the role, and so yeah, I I'd be open to that, um, but I I would really like some clear direction and a more expansive policy that clarifies what our charge is.
I I'm I'm thankful that you said that, Ms. Patrick, so I'm I'm right there with you, so Ms. Brown, any initial
Ms. Patrick and um Vice Chair um Smith, um, I'd like to um get some feedback from the um from the Board Committee? Should we
I'm sorry, does you want me to give feedback, or to, I don't know?
Um, it would be welcomed, and then Ms. Vickery.
I'll I'll let Ms. Vickery go, because she had her hand up, my apologies.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vickery?
Um, I I think I'm with Ms. Patrick, I I really, so my concern is that because C- CAC is is a volunteer um organization, although mandated by Comar regs, I'm I'm concerned that um that without the changes to Policy seventeen hundred, coming up with this language, we might still be in the same situation where we are right now. Um, so so I don't know, I'm I I might be straddling the fence here, because I I want, I prefer that the policy be updated before we do that, but then I also don't wanna not do that. Um, and then what if the 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 items developed by CAC and DIAB are not accepted by the board, I'm I
I get you, Ms. Board Member Brown.
Yes, so I did um make uh Dr. Moss, who is the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, he's fully aware um of the ask, um even prior to you all coming to present with the recommendations, um uh, Policy Number, Board Policy Number seventeen hundred is going to be up for a review next year. Um, right now, we, again, like I had stated before, we wanna make sure that CAC and DIAB do not overlap each other, but do the work that is needed to be done. Um, whatever that looks like from a legal standpoint, of course, we'll definitely make sure that we consider that. Uh, but also from a community standpoint, because we don't also want it to look like these groups are competing, because we're all fighting for our children, right, and so we wanna make sure that individuals are not coming out thinking that, oh, well DIAB is trying to do this, and we're doing, we're doing competing efforts, um, and that's not what this is about. Um, this is about community members, you know, holding each other up, holding each other accountable, holding each other's hand, and fixing things um that are able to assist in different areas, and so I will say that, like I said, uh, Dr. Moss is fully aware. Uh, we're gonna make sure that there is clarity on what DIAB does and what CAC does, uh, moving forward. But in the, in this, because we're talking about DIAB, I wanna make sure that you all are well versed in what this committee does, and making sure that we continue to fight the charge moving forward, I hope that it was helpful.
Um, yes, it was, Board Member Brown, I, it's not a question that I had to ask you, but um me always do, being a mom and doing investigation, you know how we look through everything? Um, as I was investigating accountability and transparency that the county has out on the website, as well as some of those things that listed, it's still, is is outdated, like two thousand eighteen from our past um superintendent. So I feel that anything that we're trying to accomplish through our committees, that everything had to be transparent and accoun- accountability. Um, I just went through this with my um, uh, my granddaughter's advocate and her proxy, I had to do that same thing at her high school. And but one thing I like, that the compliance officer worked with with us as a family, to have that transparency and accountability, because at this present time, it's like, I've been fighting this battle for such a long time. And things need to change. And not take forever to get those things changed, because that's the pur- purpose of having procedure and policy. But nothing should be outdated in this county. We talk about, like I said, my son would be forty years old come December. And everything that the parents here are asking for and we want in place, it shouldn't have taken over thirty plus years to get this accomplished. That transparency and accountability have to happen. Um, Ms. Smith, and then Board Member Brown.
So, um, Board Member Brown, thank you so much for what you just stated to us, so yes, I do think um, we should move forward in that regard, but I do also believe, y'all just bear with me, that there probably should be some language, even if it's just stated. Uh, well, let me also say, in regards to what Ms. Patrick put on the floor. Yeah, we need this policy changed, but in its current state, I do think that there is some language that could perhaps be shared with the community, so this is now my question. I know that the Board Office sent out communication to the principals? But do we know, did it go beyond that? Was that shared further? Look, I go, my children are in two different schools, and I have not seen any communication about this group, so I just wanna know, did it die in in our black hole?
Um, Chair, if I may um respond to to Vice Chair, because myself and um at the time, um, our director at the time, Mr. Revel Fitzpatrick, we did send out communication through our dual um, our internal communication system. And I was told that it was posted in the, to the principals, that it did go out to the principals. But I believe at one of the early meetings with um with DIAB, when you all first um came together, um, Mr. Fitzpatrick at the time mentioned that you all could reach out to your schools, uh, PTA, PTO, parent groups, parent organization groups, as well, and spread the word about the organization. In fact, I believe he mentioned that that would probably be one of your best ba- bets, because they are out there in the school communities, and they have a lot of contacts as well. But yes, um, the information was shared to principals months ago. Um, and that was, that was pretty much it, but I believe you all too were encouraged to speak with your schools' parent organization groups as well.
Board Member Brown, and then Ms. Vickery, and then Ms. Uh, Sarah B.
Board Member Brown? Thank you so much, thank you so much, Chair Blackwell, so um, I just also wanna make sure that you all are aware uh, even in the process of choosing the wonderful Ms. Myers and Mr. and Mr. Dwyer, we got over a hundred, a hundred applications. Um, and so uh, in that application process, were tons of principals and teachers. Um, and so please know that even based on the correspondence that was sent, people know that DIAB is a a group that is not to be reckoned with, you know, and so just just for your situational awareness, of course, I'm new on the board, but other board members, uh, i.e. you know, um uh, Board Member Walker, she was like, she's never seen anything like this, as far as the amount of applications that were sent, so I think us continuously communicating with the community, the way that we did through the board, of of course, with your uh PTSOs, PTAs and PTOs, um, that's gonna continue to get the word out, and continue to have an opportunity for us to have advocacy. Um, even as a board member in my um newsletters, I do also put down when DIAB will be meeting. Um, I do let people know uh for other committee meetings that are gonna be happening, and so just know that, yes, we are definitely putting in the work, um, but by all means, feel free to let organizations know and let people know what we're all about. And once we're committed to the language, um, of course, we'll definitely make sure that we share that amongst you all.
Ms. Vickery, and then Ms. Sarah B.
It it actually was um my understanding that we were advised eh that our individual board members would kind of work to invite us to their um constituent meetings, and not that we were going to reach out to the individual schools. Um, because the communication was taking quite some time to get out to the principals, and we did it, they didn't wanna, there was uh, um former board member, um, staff staffer, right, yeah, the she, Shayla, she didn't want us to get hung up, because we had gotten, I think, to like meeting two or meeting three, like it was getting out there, so it was my understanding, actually, we were supposed to have been invited by our respective board members to their constituent meetings to discuss anything. And to either get updates from our board members from constituents.
Um, Ms. Sarah B., and then Board Member Brown.
Thank you, um, yeah, my my comment was going to be along similar lines, um, I do recall a discussion in our kind of early meetings about some sort of formal announcement, and then there was a it was a, no, no, don't, don't say anything yet, we are going to put something together, and I do believe it was Dr. Moss at the time, or Mr. Fitzpatrick, is it? Uh, sorry, I sometimes can't remember my kids' names, so, um, but the position was to kind of hold, and also based on the fact that we were still determining the scope of our work, so it's hard to tell, um, like, I don't wanna go out there and be like, hey, I'm, you know, Sarah B. in District Three, and we can help you in this way and that way, when we're still navigating that. Um, so I just wanted to fi- like, I I wanna make sure I'm not dropping the ball. Um, have others already been doing this outreach? Did we actually get the green light, and I missed it? Um, and either way, today being today, what should we then be doing? I'm still of the position that we are defining that scope. Um, and would feel more comfortable proceeding once that has narrowed, or at least been defined. Um, yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm I'm executing and and living up to what I've been put on here to do. But I'm I'm feeling a little bit in the dark on that outreach part.
Thank you, Sarah B., um, Board Member Brown?
Yeah, so as the policy stands now, the eh DIAB job is accessibility when it comes to buildings. So because we're trying to expand the policy, that our goal is to expand the policy, the language is gonna be expanded, so if there is outreach that is going out, hey, I'm a part of DIAB, what we do is we look into ADA um compliance when it comes to our student building, so if there is an issue, you, as a, as a liaison for District Five, I'm saying District Five, because that's where I live. Um, I can speak to my board member and we can discuss it, and so I love that Chair Blackwell talked about how she had her board member aside her walking through the field at Duval with Dr. Uh, um, Adonful, and talking about tho- those type of issues. So if there are parents, a lot of times with people, like board members, we can't be everywhere, and so that's why we have you all to be our our ears and eyes and mouthpiece sometimes, because we we can't see everything sometimes the way you all see. because we, we can't see everything sometimes the way you all see things. And so, um, Sarah B., if you were like, hey, I went to this school, please talk to your board members representatives so that we can hopefully move it up to, to the chain a little bit faster. But then talk to parents, you know, if you are a PTO member, um, that's a best, the best opportunity. So I'm a part of my PTSO, um, at Buhey High School, because that's where my child goes. Um, and so sometimes they do give me an opportunity to be able to speak about things that are going on and what I'm able to do. And so, um, I also have what is called Coffee and Conversations one Saturday every single month, um, January through June. And so basically what happens is those are other opportunities that board members are able to speak. Now, not every board member has weekend opportunities. Not every board member does, so, so everybody kind of navigates it differently. So I definitely encourage you all to go directly to your board member and say, what does this look like as far as a partnership and as far as we all navigating and advocating for our students who have disabilities?
Um, I'd like to add to that. Um, now, one thing, I, I'm very, uh, I work well with my principal in my building. So when the communication went out, um, the principals do meet once a week, so they did get the communication. Um, because I had my principal to check and he did get it. So he was able to tell me that, you know, the principals did get it. So they, they, all the principals got the communication at the same time about DIAB. So it's out there and, um, parents are like, oh, you do this? Okay. And I had people in my building that asked me, you know, um, can, um, one of my coworkers asked if he could come as a guest today, because he's getting ready to apply to be a principal. So people know that we exist, but we do still need to get the word out. Some schools do not have a PTO, some schools do not have a PTA. So that would be the downside of that, of getting that com- that school community to know that we exist. But we do have community liaisons in the building that do things in the community and within the school. So that's another way to get that out too as well. And get, um, the community liaison in the school to put us on the list serve to be able to go, their message to go out to the parents to be, to let them know that we do it, that this committee does exist and what we do. Um, is there any other comments or suggestions that we need to discuss this evening? With, with that said, um, if we all in agreement, Vice Chair, do you like to, um, bring up anything else for the well-being of the committee?
I don't have anything else. I think that this has been such an amazing meeting this, this, tonight. There was a lot of substance put out on the floor. I'm excited about the work that we're about to put forward and everything that's coming forth behind this. My daughter got a lot to say too. You guys might hear her. But yeah, I have nothing else. Just, I thank you all for your dedication, for your, um, efforts and volunteering to do this work. Uh, you know, I just want to extend my thanks. So nothing else for me, Ms. Chair Blackwell.
Okay, Ms. Vickery?
Um, I just want to, um, make sure I have, uh, put in clarification for Board Member Brown. Um, on our last meeting minutes, you identified that June twenty sixth would be possibly for us to present. Are we still there?
I will double check on the correspondence, but I think that the chair was, is aware of it, the request. Um, and so I can definitely confirm, but I, I believe we are confirmed. But I will, I will definitely make sure that I confirm that with you all.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure everybody's calendar was okay, because, you know, we getting into field days and stuff like that.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay, um, with that said, anyone having any, uh, discussions, anything that we'd like to bring forth to the committee before we adjourn our meeting this evening? With that said, um, seven point zero, um, we were adjourned this meeting. The chair informs the public that the next virtual meeting of the Disability Issue Advisory Board will be on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Please continue to check your Prince George's County Public, um, Board of Education website for meeting details and updates. I'd like to thank, thank you for all your great discussions in attendance. To our viewers, thank you for watching and there will be no further business for the committee. The time now is eight thirty-nine PM. And the May twenty, twenty twenty-five Disability Issue Advisory Board meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for, um, coming tonight and it's greatly appreciated.
Good night, all.